March 30th, 2020 Board Meeting, the West Yaga Board of Education approved a resolution to suspend portions of certain bylaws which were not consistent with board meetings by telephone conference or video conference. A second resolution was passed December 14th, 2020, extending the Board's ability to meet via electronic means until July 1st, 2021. This resolution ensures compliance with amended substitute House Bill 197 as extended by the passage of HB 404. At this time, the Board of Education will continue its meetings by telephone conference, video conference, or other similar technologies. This meeting is a meeting of the West Yaga Local School District Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the West Yaga Local School District's business and is not to be considered a public committee, community meeting. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. Please use the chat function located at the bottom of the webpage if you would like to be recognized for public participation. I get a roll call, please.
Mr. Rainey?
Here.
Ms. LeBevere?
Yes.
Mr. Beers?
Here.
Katowski?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
The pledge, please. Pledge allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want you to approve the agenda.
Second.
All right. Roll call, please.
Dr. Beers?
Yeah.
Mr. Katowski?
Yes.
Ms. LeBevere?
Yes.
Mr. Rainey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
All right, Sean, you're up. All right. Jim, can you bring up the presentation? Okay. I want to talk to you tonight about some of the summer projects that we're looking to work on this year. We've got a number of things that we want to do around the district. So some of these projects require bids and advertising. The district seal coating and patching that we do every year is something we're going to continue doing. Our parking lots are in various stages of need based on their age. So every year, the patching portion in particular is pretty critical. For architectural and engineering services that we need this year, we want to take a close look at Lindsay. The Lindsay parking lot last year, when we looked at the expansion, we found out that the north lot where the visitors park in particular is very alligatored. It's in the patching now that we're doing, we're basically trying to patch and hold together the entire lot because of the state that it's in. So the lot really at this point needs to be rebuilt. So it's something that we want to get some architectural services taking a look at. GPD already looked at it last year, so we've commissioned them again to take a closer look to that lot in particular for this year, so we can go out to bid for that lot. We have some issues with doors at the high school, Westwood and Lindsay, just due to age and to the fact that we have the weather that we do here. Salt and issues like that have started to rot away at the doors. We have a security issue on a number of these doors. We're looking at doors in particular on the north side and the 306 facing side of the high school that need to be taken care of and some doors for security concerns at both Westwood and Lindsay that are just really in some bad shape at this point that we want to take a look at. We also have a problem that's crept up recently with the high school fire alarm panel, which currently it's been patched together, so it's functioning. But we are trying to get some bids out there so that way we can take care of fixing that problem permanently. It's not as simple as just replacing the panel. We have to replace the whole system when you do that and bring it up to code because the old panel was grandfathered into the previous code. So it's a process that we have to go through with that. The next piece that we want to look at is we've done a master plan for the district as far as taking a look at the buildings. We're at a point right now where we need to have some professional landscaping, architectural, professional landscape architectural services to do a facility study, basically taking a look at our current grounds for future use. We have talked a lot about things. We need a water treatment plant for our district. We know that we need some wells for our district and we need to know what some potential sites for those wells would be. That will drive the placement of the potential buildings that we've been talking about in the master plan. We also need to start taking a look at some of our athletic areas because we have some areas that are in need. And if we're looking to do any work on those areas, we need to know where they are best placed for the future of our district as we go forward, so that way any work that we're doing feeds into our master plan. And we want to take a look at the future of our parking lots and traffic flow based on some of the master planning that we've been doing as well. The building facade is something we also need to take a look at. We're in the exploration phase of this. There's some issues with the building facade at both the middle school and high school with regards to the tile. We're at a point right now where in some cases, yes, we are still able to patch the tile, but if you take a look at the buildings, what you're going to see is some buckling of the tile now, which is starting to become a structural problem with the tile. So we're trying to take a look at finding some solutions that take into account cost and our future district plans. So we want to be as cost effective as possible while making our buildings appealing during the interim while we're getting our master plan moving forward. So as we're looking at these, and these are approximate totals, because some of these we really do need to have architectural services come in and get us some final pricing on this. The doors are pretty accurate. We've got the doors at the high school at about $48,000. We've got the doors at Westwood at $41,000. The doors at Lindsay at $36,600 to take care of the security issues there. The campus study that I mentioned earlier is $20,000. The parking lots at Lindsay, that is truly an estimate. We really need to have GPD finish its study in order to determine that piece. We do know that that part, we have to go back and completely rework that parking lot based on its current condition. Seal coating and patching, we know based on our estimates. The file, high school file, fire panel is another one that we need to go out to bid for. We do have to replace one rooftop unit at the middle school auxiliary gym. And we have to replace the valves in all of our univents throughout the district. We had a recent issue at Lindsay in one of our classrooms and we're looking at just our system in general, replacing the valves to make sure that we've got control over the water flow between our systems. So that's a project that will affect three of our buildings that we're going to be doing this year. And then the last piece, we need to go early for our Chromebooks this year. We're still at a state where it's very hard to get technology and our district has gone one-to-one. Because of our, our remote start this year, what we ended up doing at the middle school is we rolled out grades six to eight, one-to-one Chromebooks within the building. They aren't keeping the devices, but they are taking them home. And so instead of having them in carts, the students now have them attached and it's been very successful at that building. So we're looking to get 560 Dell Chromebooks this year. This will continue our ninth grade one-to-one program. In the high school next year, every student will have their own attached device that they're paying into. They'll be paying the $50 a year fee again and they will own the device when they graduate. The middle school will be doing a seventh grade replacement for one-to-one. And Lindsay will be doing a grade five replacement. Our gently-used older Chromebooks at this point will be issued to Westwood for K to two. We do not need to purchase carts anymore because of the fact that we're phasing them out at both the high school and the middle school because they're attached to the students. So we'll be able to use those carts at the other buildings and that's a cost savings at this point. We don't have to continue purchasing them every year. Our oldest silver Samsung Chromebooks that are still in service are at the stage where they need to be phased out. There's limitations to what they can do as far as classroom service now. We were able to use them this year during our remote learning periods and they got us through and over the hump. So it saved us having to open up every single cart that we had in the building, particularly at the elementaries. So this year though, we really do need to start phasing out some of these machines. We've noticed that they're much slower than our other Chromebooks and that's going to be a piece that we're doing off of that. So do you have any questions for me on any of these? I know I threw a lot at you, so if there's anything that you have questions about, I welcome them.
I've got a couple of questions, Sean. The landscape architect, you're talking about wells and some other placements and things. How does a landscape architect know about well placement?
It's basically looking at where on our property that they're potentially going to put the buildings. They're going to do a study of our, our land as far as, I'm trying to think of the terminology that I was, they're going to be doing a study of the wetlands and the areas over there as far as places that we are able to, places that we're able to build versus places that we can't use as far as our land goes.
I just, because I've got, the original well with my house is only 60, you know, feet deep, 60, 70 feet deep. And when they, they were drilling for a new well, they were down 200 and plus. So I just don't, I wondered what a landscape architect would know about, about where to place or what would be a good drilling. And my other question is, is there any kind of a market for these silver Samsungs or can, do we have something that can be done with them or, or give them away to somebody who could use them?
We've been, we've been using them for parts.
Okay.
So we're still using them this year for parts. One of the areas that we've been actually using Samsungs to continue keeping the Samsungs going this year. It's why we're at the point we've got to phase them out. As far as, is there a market for them? We have, there are some companies that will give you a small amount of money for them. They're so old at this point.
Yeah.
That yes, we'll get something for them if you go to scrap them, but it's minimal that we're going to get at this point. What's going to happen though is in recent years, thanks to the support of the Board, we have been more aggressive on our refresh. So we're going to start having machines that we can phase out earlier. So we might be better served able to sell them for a higher amount of money and be able to see some return on them. We're still dealing with machines though, we're keeping them at least, you know, six years and beyond. So by the time that we're ready to unload them, it's, there's not really a market for them at that stage. We get quite a bit of use out of our machines.
Yeah.
Talking about machines that are in that $200 price range. So we get, we get, definitely get our money's worth as a district out of them.
Okay. Just whether we've done any research into seeing too, whether there's any, any other school system or somewhere else that is not as fortunate as we are who might be able to, to make use of them.
Anything we go to, if we were to give them away to a company, I mean, not give them away to a company, but sell them to a company, before we would do that, we always reach out to any of the local private schools and things like that that are near us and offer those items to them. And certainly we would offer them to disadvantaged schools too, if there was an opportunity for it. They're usually at that point though, when we're ready to unload them, they're in bad shape, so we're not really benefiting another district with them at this point.
Got it. Thank you.
Profess to be able to read Sean's mind, but I think what he was talking about was a topographical study. And when we're looking at the lay of the land, we have to look at the elevation, et cetera. And the placement of the buildings will become sort of the driver in terms of where we have the athletic fields, where we'd have the, the water treatment plant and where we'd have the wells. Kathy, I'm with you. I don't know exactly how anyone other than an expert in well drilling could cite the best location for a well. And even then, my experience has probably been similar to yours. You don't really know until they do the boring and you see how hard it takes to hit water.
Right. Even getting a, I mean, I know Tony Paskovich used to say that he could do a divining rod kind of thing and figure it out. I said, yeah, right.
Few people do that. I think it's somewhat scary, but.
Yeah. EPA is really going to have a major role in that too, as far as where we're able to place the well. So I mean, that's, that's going to be a component of that.
And the county keeps data on every well that's drilled. So we do have some knowledge of what's down there. The, some of the big questions are like what the flow rate is going to be and so on. And you don't know that until a well is drilled, of course.
Right.
I had a question about the rooftop unit at the middle school. Now, are those the units, excuse me, among them that are about 25 years old?
Yes.
Okay. So I know we've got better maintenance because we've got a maintenance plan now and we're doing it regularly, but is this a harbinger of things to come? Having to replace that unit because we've extended them beyond their lifespan, as I understand it?
Yes. We have, we have no, we have units still from 96 that we have to replace. So to answer your question, yes, we do have more that we're going to have to replace.
Okay. So we're going to start seeing that. The other question I have.
We have about, Ben, we have about eight of them.
Oh, is that all? Really? We've.
We've been, we've been doing a good job at gradually replacing them. So I mean, that's been something we've been doing as a district. So we have about eight left that need to still be replaced from, from that batch.
Oh, okay.
No, you're accurate in the sense that we are, we're being more aggressive with maintenance on them.
Yeah.
Mark has done a great job at keeping up on that.
Yeah, I can't imagine you know this, Sean, but if we do build a new building, would some of these units have any, and maybe this is worth finding out, would some of these units have any value in the used industrial market? I'm curious about that because some of them at that point won't be too old, you know? I just wonder about that.
I don't know. If they're, you're talking like a resale value for them in the future, I don't know.
Yeah. The, the other question I had was about the doors. You know, we've got these incredibly ugly doors in the front of the middle school going into the cafeteria. And those, those are not going to be replaced though, right?
Not this time around. We actually, we've, we've put together a five-year plan where we've been looking at projects that need to be done. The doors, this is phase one of things we have to do with the doors. And the reason why these doors are being prioritized, Ben, is it's really the security risk involved in these doors.
Yeah. Is there a point in the plan where we can get at those doors?
Yes, absolutely.
Oh, thank goodness. Okay.
Really, at this, at this point, these, the doors that we picked, we prioritized in the first batch, doors that are really a genuine security risk.
Yeah. Yeah. The other thing I was wondering about, you know, Lindsay jogged my mind on Westwood. We put a lot of money into Westwood's drainage. Is that problem solved now or where do we stand?
Though, the drainage problem, we still have to work on for Westwood. That is, that is an upcoming project as well.
We really did not, we cut that from the last, last summer budget.
Okay.
We didn't spend that money yet, Ben.
Okay. Good. So does Lindsay involve drainage too, or is that, or are you going to find out when you get in there?
Lindsay's main, yes, there's some, there's some drainage issues at Lindsay that potentially have to be dealt with. And Lindsay's parking lot, the reason why we're prioritizing that one first is it's in far worse shape.
Ah, okay. Okay.
Part of, part of, part of the point of having the architectural firm do further exploration on Lindsay is for us to really know what the status is of Lindsay. So drainage, we're, we're assuming that's going to be part of the issue that we have to address, but until they get finished with their study, that's, that's something we're not going to know yet. That's part of the question mark that I mentioned earlier, just full disclosure, where that's something we really need them to finalize with us.
Sean, assuming that a parking lot has been put in properly, whatever that really means, and you don't have drainage problems and all those other kinds of things, how long would you expect the parking lot to last?
That's a good question, especially considering our area here.
Assuming normal maintenance, like is seal coating and stuff like that?
I, I would, I would be very hard pressed to put a number on that considering, I mean, we'd have to do our, obviously like you're saying, your seal coating and patching every year. I, I would not want to put a number on that.
Okay. Well, let me ask the question a different way then. Have we replaced the Lindsay parking lot in the last 20 years?
I don't know the history of that, if we have.
Okay. Good enough. And my other question is about the, the district valve replacement on the univents.
Sure.
And you referenced the, the problem that was at Lindsay recently?
Yes.
Is there a way to, on, with these valves, to have some kind of flow indicator or something or other so that you can tell if there's a problem with a leak? I'm just thinking that Connecticut was here, oh, six months ago, excuse me, dealing with our water softener. And one of the things that they were trying to sell me was their new water softener that could tell when there was a water pipe break and then shut the water off.
Our current system, I know, one of the things that it does is it tells us variations in the classrooms. So our issue with the classroom in question was it had to do with the coil and we think that there was a blockage potentially in the coil in there that caused that issue potentially. So it didn't generate an alarm. The valves are something that we know they need to be replaced district-wide in order to assure proper water flow on them. It's, it's a cop, we, when we put in our new control system, one of the pieces that came with our control system was various alarms that would alert us to any sort of differences in the classrooms. So yes, there are alarms there. Unfortunately, not the honest answer is not every alarm system is foolproof.
Yeah. No. Sean, am I the only, am I the only one here who doesn't know what a unevent is? I have no idea.
Oh, the, so the unevent is basically.
You are.
I am, yeah, you know.
That's a really good question. I'll try to give you an easy answer to that one. In each of our classrooms is the, there's a single box unit that basically is interconnected throughout the building and hot water flows through them in order to provide heat. It's a very simple answer to a system that is a little more complex than that, but that's, that's basically what the univents are. In our elementary buildings, in our middle school and high school, we have univents that provide the heat in those classrooms. So.
Okay, that's simple. Thanks.
A glorified radiator system, you know?
Yeah. Does it have a fan or is it just gravity and air exchange?
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Oh, I said, does it have a fan or is it just gravity and air exchange?
Water pressure pushes the water through the buildings.
I mean, the hot air going into the classroom.
Oh, there's motors that push the air through the classroom.
Oh, okay.
It's motor-based.
An answer to your question is though, the, the system is an old system. It was obviously in the building when the building was built. One of the easiest ways that I know that Mark and Sean are utilizing now to prevent a blockage, if, if at all possible, is to try to keep the, we, first of all, we don't know why the, why the coil froze and why the valve malfunctioned. But one of the things that we can do is we can keep the valves open to a degree like 5% opening bill. And if there's water moving through it, water that's moving obviously is, is less likely to freeze than water that becomes stagnant. And it was something that, the diagnosis of the, of the unit is not complete, but what the heating people told us was that it appears that the valve in some way malfunctioned in a closed position and the water, the water when it wasn't moving froze because the univents are by the exterior walls. You've all seen them, they're like the, they look like a radiator that's alongside the, the windows in the, in the building. There was also a question, I believe, Sean, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think there was a gasket that, a foam gasket that, that appeared to have deteriorated a little bit. It takes nothing in, in terms of cold air when you're zero degrees. If you have a very, very small, tiny area of cold air that gets in, it can freeze a pipe, particularly if the water's not moving. So the system's an old system. We feel that the best way to address it right now is to replace all the valves. Obviously, when you have one classroom out of commission, it's, it's, you can handle the situation. Oftentimes what happens when this occurs is that you'll have multiple classrooms with the valves malfunctioning around the same time if it's, if the units are all around the same age. So one of the other pieces that we've looked at is, is keeping at least temporarily when the, when the temperature gets down around zero, to run the rooms on, on occupancy status rather than an unoccupied status so that it keeps the rooms maybe five degrees or so warmer. And you don't need to do that under normal temperatures, but obviously when it gets down, the days when these usually happen are when you're getting down in temperatures that are around zero or the sub-zero temps. And so we're, we're taking precautions and manual checks of the, of the units will also be something that we may have to do. We may have to send some custodians in on the weekends when we've had, this time it was sort of a perfect storm. We had very, very cold temperatures. Keep in mind, we had Martin Luther King.
President's Day, you're right.
President's Day, okay, I was right. President's Day was Monday and then we closed school on Tuesday. So we had a prolonged period where the building was unoccupied. So it was sort of the perfect storm, but we're working on it.
What, one of the other things that Mark's doing is water flow alarms, you know, anything that would be a variation on the system to make, make us aware of it. And those are, it's not, it's not a perfect answer. I wish I could give you one that there was some.
Yeah, no, that's the kind of thing I was, I was thinking of, I think. And yeah, you don't have any perfect answers. The question is how many redundancies do you have that hopefully one of them will catch?
And that's what, that's what we're trying to do. Mark's been very aggressive about working with our, our controls company to look at what other things we can put in place that would alert us to any potential changes because the sooner we're aware of a change, the sooner we can react to it.
Yeah.
That's, that's really been a piece that our system allows us to do, and more importantly, not just when we're on site, but when we're offsite. Any other questions?
Anything else for Sean? Thank you. That was great.
Thanks, Sean.
So there does not appear to be anyone who has signed up in chat for public remarks?
No, chat room's empty.
So routine items?
Okay. Resolution 85 to approve routine matters of the West Yaga Local Board of Education to approve a January 2021 financial statement for minutes. And that will be it.
The move?
Second.
Take it away. I know you want to, I know you have things to say.
I have things to say. I completed our, we had our tax budget hearing for 2022 today. We met with the tax commission that was approved. One of the things that are going forward as we look at the 2022 financials, the county auditor is still looking at a 95% collection. And we had obviously exceeded that this August. We're waiting to see what the final settlements will be in March. We're probably a week or so behind. A lot of that has to do with the mail system. A lot of things are coming in late. We normally would have had a third advance by now, but we have not received that. So we are still waiting for that. And then the final settlement will be in March to determine, you know, kind of where our collections have been. Some areas of concern are delinquencies. We have some delinquencies higher than expected in the Newberry area. We're working through those with the county to determine exactly what those relate to and kind of investigate those as we go along and learn more about Newberry. Just to talk through our financials for this year, our cash for January, we're $23,300, $23,300,000 at the end of January. We look at our Schedule D, which is for the general fund. We are in good shape. The most of the variances related between the 2020 and 2021 are related to the Newberry addition of property taxes and the additional expenses associated with the Newberry staff coming over. If we look at our variance for this year related to our current year budget, we have $120,000 increase or favorable variance from our restricted, restricted grants. One of the things that we talked about was the governor had reduced our budget going into May. He's now, as their sales tax and income taxes have not been as bad, or there even some are exceeding what the, they had expected or forecasted for 2021, they're reducing that reduction. So we're going to be seeing that come back to us in that, that line item. We would expect, we originally expected six, over $600,000 reductions and we're going to be a little over 400, we're going to be a little over $200,000 when we all end this. So that's favorable and we'll see that come along. In the all other column, you see a large variance of $516,000. That is mostly, well, all of it's related to the workers' comp refund, the rebate. We saw a little bit of a rebate last year. The worker's. We saw a little bit of a rebate last year. The workers' comp plan has rebated numerous years of our premiums. We usually pay about $110,000, $120,000 in workers' comp premiums. Those have now come back to us. So we see that $500,000 variance that we were not expecting. And that does kind of wonder how much they were overcharging us for workers' comp, but we're seeing that come back to us. It's not related to one year. It's related to multiple years. That is probably the last rebate we'll see. We've been seeing them kind of smaller going along, but that'll be the one we see. So that is now available to us in the general fund. On the expenditures, we're seeing favorable variances on personnel services. Those are related to our substitutes. We would like to have more substitutes, but we don't have those. So we're running probably about $200,000 ahead of what we had budgeted due to the lack of just not having the substitutes available to us. Plus, the idea that some of our staff are able to, even though they're quarantined, they're able to teach remotely from home. So we're having, you know, we're not having to have a substitute in that class. Our favorable variance, we have $147,000 favorable variance in our employees' retirement. That is due to, we had estimated a higher than expected, a higher amount for unemployment claims for the Newbury staff. When they came over, some of those staff didn't come over. We had a, they had a large rift. Those individuals have, have gotten jobs. Part of that's, you know, a lot of people, we had a, a big influx of needs for staff this year due to COVID. So we haven't had the unemployment charges associated with that, that we had expected. And then supplies, $100,000 variance, that is because we had moved those from our general fund over to our, our COVID funds. We do anticipate moving, going forward, we do have about $490,000 in S R two funds. We did get that allocation this week. That requires an application. I've met with Sean, I've met with Nancy and Amy, met with Mark to kind of talk about how we would want to spend that money. The governor wants us to really focus that money on remedial work for our students, summer school, those kind of things that we have in place to really kind of meet the needs of our students that they've either fallen behind or they continue to be behind. So we're, we'll be looking at that and they come back to the board with a plan on how we would use those funds. One of the things that we are talking about, Ben, one of the things is the UNIVANCE, the RTUs. We can use some of that money to, to replace those old aging 1996 RTU units. They are letting us use that S R money for some of those as well. So we could probably use that going forward. If we look at Schedule F, that is related to the food services, we are right at now about $50,000 down from what we had expected, you know, from a break even standpoint, that it, we transferred $50,000 earlier this year. So we're right, right at break even. We anticipate this continuing for the rest of the year. So we're going to be looking at that, kind of monitoring that to make sure we don't have to make any additional transfers. Right now, we get between $20,000 and $30,000 in subsidies from the federal programming as we file for those for the, the individual kids that are getting lunch and breakfast programming. And grant wise, we received a job accounting mental health grant, $25,348, $336,000. And then we received our foundation grants from the W G E F as well. And that is my report, sir.
Okay, any questions? Roll call.
Mr. Katsowski.
Yes.
Ms. Loveworth?
Yes.
Mr. Rainey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Resolution 86 to approve the warrants for the January 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Questions? Roll call, please.
Loveworth?
Yes.
Mr. Rainey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Resolution 87 to accept the donation from Never Never, it's not Never, Never dental practice for this stadium signage for $1,500.
Mevar.
Mevar. Thank you.
So move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Rainey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Ms. Loveworth?
Yes.
Resolution 88 is to approve supplemental contracts for the 2020, 2021 school year.
So moved.
I need a second. Who has a second on that?
I'll second. Did you have a question, Kathy?
No, I, I'm sorry. I was down the agenda a little bit. I thought we'd missed something. My mistake. Sorry.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Ms. Loveworth?
Yes.
Mr. Rainey?
Yes.
Resolution 89 is to authorize the award of a service contract for the 2020, 2021 school year.
So move.
Second.
Questions? Roll call.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Ms. Loveworth?
Yes.
Mr. Rainey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Resolution 90 is to approve the 2021, 2022 West Giaga Local School Year Calendar.
So moved. Second.
Questions, discussion? Roll call, please.
I just have to tell you that I'm so glad that this is just a, the formality now, because back years, years ago, it used to be a, we would spend meetings going over this to get board members to, to kind of, oh, okay, we'll weigh in on that, that'll be. So thank you. I think it's something that we shouldn't have spent so much time on in the past.
Nancy and the teachers, representatives of the teachers' unions were the ones who did most of the work. I just look at it sometimes and say, you know, give, give my input and sort of send them back, but they did the work, so.
Yeah.
Shout out to Bill Bryan. He really is responsible and so wonderful to work with. He makes it super easy.
That's great.
Great.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Roll call.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Ms. Loveworth?
Yes.
Mr. Rainey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Resolution 91 is to approve the Ohio Schools Council Cooperative Advertising and Receiving Bids for School Bus Chassis and Bodies. This is for two school buses.
So moved.
Second.
Questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Loveworth?
Yes.
Mr. Rainey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Resolution 92 is the resolution to authorize advertising for bids on the 2021 summer projects that Sean laid out for you this evening.
So move.
Second.
Questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rainey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Ms. Loveworth?
Yes.
Resolution 93 is to authorize advertising for bids for waste and recycling services.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Questions?
So, I, I just don't remember this coming up before, maybe because we just, do we do this, this one every year or every five years or something? Or is this new or?
What was the expiration, Karen, on the other one that we, the agreement that we had?
We have been coming up, this will be the last year of that. So we're bidding these, this project out with the Ohio Schools Council, similar to what they do with the busing. And so Sean's been working with them on looking at the waste pickup. The recycling component of that is an optional component. But I know the board had wanted to look at that. So Sean has added that to our request. We don't have to accept it if it's something that comes out to be more than what we had expected. So this is, this is the first time it's come up, is a request to go out for bids in the last five years for me. So this will be our first time to come to the board with it.
And just duration of the, of a contract?
Yeah, I'm, Sean, do you remember how long their, the bid processes are, the bid packages for?
It's four years.
Four years, yeah.
Okay. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Ms. Loveworth?
Yes.
Mr. Rainey?
Yes.
I sign up. It should be only half an hour to an hour, so. I'll give you a phone number. You text me when you're done. Come at a less.
Tonight's very brief. We're at the time of the year where we're actually focusing a great deal on the upcoming school year. And you can see that in a number of the activities that are going on right now. Two of them have already been mentioned to you. Sean talked to you about the summer projects that are underway that we have to do to get our facilities ready for the upcoming school year. And Karen mentioned just briefly the extended learning experiences for students that we've been told we have to offer this year. Obviously, the pandemic has taken its toll academically on school districts throughout the state. And it would be hard to argue for any school district that there haven't been some academic losses as a result of students either being at home and not able to access the curriculum directly in school, or coming to school and having to deal with hybrid models or models where in some cases, teaching staff did not appear in the buildings. We, we've been fortunate because we've dodged a lot of bullets here. And, you know, I've said this many, many times, hats off from, from me to our staff, because while other districts were trying to get people to come to work, our staff came to work. And our, our, our parents had confidence in that fact. Our parents sent their students to school. And the parents who didn't send their students to school for very many good reasons this year were, I think, quite comfortable and confident in the fact that we were doing our best to offer a virtual academy for those students that really did enable those kids to access the curriculum. It wasn't like you, you get a, you know, an option A or an option B, and qualitatively, there's a great difference. We really tried to make sure that our online offerings also as closely matched as possible, the quality of the programs that we offered onsite. But all students paced, faced with the pandemic, even if they were onsite, faced challenges this year. Social distancing is not designed for little kids. It's, it's an essential when they come to school. But when you walk into kindergarten or a first grade classroom and you see the kids sitting in seats that are six feet apart and they're wearing their masks, it really is a tribute to our kids, their parents and their teachers that we were able to do this. And they are learning, but it's not an optimal learning environment. It can't be with the social distancing restrictions in place. And while we understand the need for them, we also realize that we can't offer the same types of learning experiences that we offered pre-pandemic. So we have to now offer some opportunities for students to gain up some of the ground that they may have lost during this past school year, and quite honestly, a quarter of the previous year. So what we're doing is we're developing some programs that will be offered in the summer. There may be some extended learning opportunities for students that could involve their being onsite in the summer. What we are not looking at at this point in time is elongating the school calendar, making our current school year longer, or starting our, our next year's school year earlier. The districts, I think, that are doing that are the ones that have faced greater challenges than we have during this particular school year. We will have some ground to make up academically, as will every other district. I'm going out on a limb here and saying that we will have far less academic grounds to make up than many others. So we are looking at this. It will be designed to provide benefits to all of our kids. Not just our kids who struggle, but even our, even our strongest students will have experienced some academic loss this year and last, and we're trying to help those kids come up to speed. So it's a program that will be fairly comprehensive in nature. It will be multifaceted. We'll be looking at several community groups for input into what we're offering our students, because we have to design programs that are responsive to the needs of our kids and our families. And then we also have to have a report, a written report of our plan submitted to the Ohio Department of Education by April 1st. So we've got quite a bit of work to do between now and April 1st to get this operational and, and in place. It has the opportunity to, to morph somewhat and evolve somewhat as we move forward. But we are expected to have the general outlines of the plan, the bones, so to speak, submitted to O D E by April 1st. So we'll be working on that. We're also looking next year at some of the things we'll need in terms of programming. There'll be some fairly exciting programming enhancements that we're trying to put in place for next year, staffing, et cetera. So this time of the year, really now, when people think of it as sort of the, the home stretch of the school year is really the launch for next school year as well. So we're keeping busy.
Okay, thank you. See, no board reports, I believe. So we just have the announcement of the next board meeting, which will be the same location, I suppose.
You sure, Chad? Can't we just go into executive session in honor of Dan?
I mean, if you really want to. Well, Dan could go.
He probably will as soon as the meeting is adjourned. We'll be right in.
I mean, you say, Dan, you
Wow.
I know, it's a tough crowd. It's a bad, it's a tough room.
Hey, Dan, I just want you to note that I did not say that, okay?
Yeah, you, you exercised remarkable restraint. I'm impressed.
I paid Kathy.
I'm glad to see the board cooperating like this. All right, can I get a resolution to adjourn?
I move, move.
Second.
I get a roll call quickly.
Dr. Beers?
Yeah, before we change our mind.
Dr. Beers?
Yep.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Ms. Loveworth?
Oh, okay.
Mr. Rainey?
You bet.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.